The special meeting of the school board to order at 5:35. And, um, welcome everyone. Um, let's see, is Edie coming tonight?
Yes, she's right behind me.
Great, okay. And I suspect that Rick Gordon will be showing up momentarily, but we have a boring at this point. Um, and, uh, let's see, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, I'd like to present the school board with a letter from your neighbors and colleagues from Rockingham School Board. May I? I mean, I don't know if you want to do it now.
I, well, is it regarding merger activities or Act 46? Then, I was also wanting to move item six up to the beginning of the agenda or right after the approving minutes from last week because I think we need to all be aware of what it means to be voting on the budget, Rick. So, so maybe we'll consider that letter at, you know, after we approve the minutes.
Thank you. You can go to next room.
Um, and welcome, Edie.
Thank you.
Um, and, let's see, do we have the minutes of class?
I read them online.
You read them online?
I'm aware of a mistake somewhere, but I don't remember where it was. I think that somewhere in there, I did something about the lawsuit against the Agency of Education, or the Agency of Education instead of the State Board of Education.
Grab them in some weeks.
Okay.
And I have them in front of me.
Here is the, here it is, right here. Um, if I pass it to you, would you catch it?
Yeah.
Did you notice anything, Cheryl, that we suggested change?
One in the, I think it was, we had, there were at least two sets of minutes. Have we already approved December 4? Both of those were in tonight's meeting, which is why I'm asking.
I'm pretty sure we approved them last, both the budget and the regular.
He wasn't serious. I have no other corrections or additions tonight.
Okay.
Maybe I didn't make the mistake. I guess I don't see it, I'm sorry. I thought I...
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the budget meeting of January 8th, a week ago, as well as the minutes of the, well, these are just minutes of the budget meeting, starting at 5:30?
This is December 4.
Yeah, December 4. I thought we approved that last week.
I think this, the agenda is missing last week's meeting, is what I'm noticing.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't, I think it just, it was a typo or...
Correct.
So, what we are missing is the minutes, we have the minutes from the committee, but we don't have the minutes from the full board meeting.
It's online, that's right.
Ask her.
Yeah, it's on the same file.
Okay, okay. Has anyone had a chance to read those you have?
I don't know if they're here, so I don't care. I didn't read them.
Okay. Um, then, is there a motion to approve the minutes both for the budget committee meeting last week and the board meeting?
And the date was just January 8th?
January 8th.
Yeah. I moved that we approved the minutes from the January 8th budget committee meeting and board meeting.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is good. Okay, um, now, are there any communications in public comments? All right, then, let's go on to the agenda. We're gonna just talk about item six before we get to the main reason for our meeting, which is to discuss and approve, we hope, the FY '20 budget and the town meeting warning articles. Um, so, uh, we need to be aware of what we're doing at this point. The, usually, approving the budget and warning town meeting articles is something that happens every year and it's fairly routine and should not be that exceptional. But, in this case, the Agency of Education has been putting pressure, sort of kind of increasing pressure over the last few days on towns like ours, and school districts like ours, that the statewide plan has to be merged with other town school districts. It's been putting increasing pressure and has been sending out documents and messages saying that towns should not vote on their budgets and should not warn town meeting articles. And, uh, also, I understand just today, or maybe yesterday, sometime in the last very short time, the budget, is it, this is true, Edie, the budget from Westminster, Athens and Grafton were combined on the AOE?
They, they expect us to combine them and the tuition rate that was due today had to be combined. And what I did was I took the highest rate that was voted between the two boards, Athens, Grafton and West, figuring that if we were separate, you can always go back to what you voted on and have the lower amount. But, I didn't have a choice because the template they sent me was for Rockingham, the high school, and then the new unified district. And I called the state after I got the template and told them that we, that the merger was on hold and that I needed to talk to someone, and no one called me back.
Hmm, okay. So, we got, um, this, as far as I know, this started last Wednesday with, and I'm sure it started earlier, but there was a document that was sent out called Transition Timeline Facts from the, from the Agency of Education. And I'll, some of you have seen it, but I'll pass it around. And it essentially says that even though there is a stay in, oh, you've seen what I'm saying, pass it. Essentially, if there is a, though there is a stay on the merger activities, they still expect school districts to comply and they are telling towns not to approve school district budgets and essentially not to proceed with what we're expecting to proceed with tonight.
Right.
Um, now, I ran that by a couple of lawyers, including the lead lawyer for the, the 32 towns that have signed on as plaintiffs through the lawsuit. And he said, you have to ask, he said, "That is poor advice. You have to ask yourself a series of questions." And he said, "One question is, is there a board that oversees the town schools right now?" And that is this board in Westminster. "Is there a transition board?" And the answer is no. There is no. "Is there a time scheduled when a transition board to a merged district would happen?" And the answer is no. "Is there a..." And so, he said, "You were elected by your voters to run the school district. And in some sense, given there is no other school district and there's legal matters that are, make the possibility of another district, you know, unsure, it would be irresponsible not to vote for a budget for next year and not to proceed with activities because no one knows what will happen." That was his advice. I also spoke with Fletcher Proctor, who is an attorney in town and is the town meeting moderator for Westminster, and he gave very similar advice. I have been trying to reach Larry Slayson, who has advised us on some matters relating to Act 46. And he's been, I haven't been able to reach him, but he did write up a, um, a wonderful five-page document, which I think most of you have seen, and I forwarded on to the SU office. It's his review of the multi-district complaint. And, um, I'll just read one paragraph on it. In it, he says, "The Athens School District case," and the reason why Athens is called the Athens School District case is because Athens is the, is the first town in the alphabetical list of the 32 towns. "The Athens School District case presents a wonderfully readable and thorough explanation of the Act 46, Act 49 process and highlights the multiple deficiencies, inconsistencies, unconstitutional actions, due process violations, and arbitrary and capricious manner in which Act 46, Act 49 has been adopted and implemented. The citizens of Vermont and Vermont's school districts have been denied fundamental legal rights without due process of law. The State Board compounded the due process violations through its failure to adopt implementing rules in complete disregard of the Administrative Procedures Act, which requires public comment, transparency, and legislative approval." And he goes on and goes through piece by piece, or item by item, through the lawsuit. And a very, a very well-done summary, which I'll pass around. Have you seen it, Cheryl?
Yes, I have.
Yeah.
And David, for the public, he is the attorney for the town of Westminster.
He's the attorney for the town of Westminster. He's an attorney at Stemmon and Ostrom in Bell's House. Um, and then, um, so, so that, that's the kind of the legal advice, which is counter to the, the advice from the Agency of Education that we're getting. And, um, the one other thing that I want to mention in relation to that, um, oh, is that yesterday, the lawyers, the team of lawyers that represents the 32 towns submitted a, something called an immediate stat, request for an immediate status conference to address these pressures that are coming from the Agency of Education. And, uh, so, there may well be some sort of decision by the courts pretty quickly because they're doing a, they're wording this as an emergency thing that will, that will help all of us sort through where to go with this. But, um, and that, that, I've got a copy of that status, uh, request for an immediate status conference, which if you're interested, you could look at. Now, as it happens, all of this uncertainty has slowed up the budgeting process, not just for towns right here, but towns all across the state. So, we, unlike, we're, we're feeling late approving a budget, but we are the first town of this group of towns to approve a budget, if we do it tonight. So, we, other towns are, have, you know, it's, have been wondering what on earth to do, given the uncertainties of all this. So, we should, we should be aware, as we proceed through the agenda, that we will be setting a precedent if we go ahead with it. And I just wanted all of us to make sure we're aware of that. So, any, any further thoughts or comments, questions?
Well, I, I will say, even though we feel we may be a little later than we'd like to be, we have been meeting actively and preparing at every step to go ahead and submit a budget. We have known that in principle, it made no sense not to exercise our responsibilities to the community members of this town. So, we've tried to do it all, to be responsive to what's going on from the state directives, but to do what we were elected to do for our townspeople. So, I don't want people to be thinking, if we do pass a budget tonight, it's not in haste. We've been talking about it in detail.
Right, good, very important. And we were actually prepared to pass it last week ago, but then there were some figures that were questioned.
That we needed.
That we needed. Any other thoughts or questions? Lynn, you said you had a letter from the Rockingham Board?
Yes. The Rockingham School Committee, School Board asked me to hand that to you and members of the Westminster and Athens, Grafton school boards. It's a letter of support that is being sent to the Vermont School Board...
State Board of Education.
...of Education, as well as several lawmakers, Secretary French, and other high-ranking individuals in the state. And this is just so that you are aware that they do feel they support every step of the way, everything you're doing.
And this, it's dated January 14. Did the Rockingham Board meet on...
Last night.
Last night.
And this was presented and signed by majority of the board members. The other two were actually absent.
Yeah.
So, the copy that's going to the state will not, will not have those names there.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, um, so Dave, is this the time we want to discuss this, or is it, are we gonna discuss it at the budget time? And thank you for your summary.
Yeah, I, I think if we want to discuss anything related to the, the merger activities, the, the advice from the lawyers, any of that sort of thing, we could do it right now. If we want to discuss the budget, oh, and also whether or not we want to even address the budget, or if there are questions about whether we want to address the budget or the town meeting warning, we should do it right now. But otherwise, we will, we'll wait to the budget item and the town meeting warning articles items to discuss the details of the budget.
But then, but the fact that it'll be going to the single budget, that, our own budget.
Correct.
And just out of curiosity, if we were following the AOE wants, what would we be doing right now?
No.
Where would the budget, the new merge budget come from? Magic?
They, they're, the reasoning from the AOE is that there is a statewide plan that has been adopted by the State Board of Education. And that that plan says that Westminster, Athens, and Grafton will be one district on July 1. And, along with a whole handful of other mergers. And that any activities by the individual town districts are meaningless, given that there is a statewide plan that has been adopted by the State Board of Education starting July 1 this summer. So, that's their reasoning. They're not considering the fact that there is a lawsuit, there's a stay on organizing any of those meetings and, or any of those new districts, merged districts. And so, we would, you know, even if we were not feeling responsible to the voters that elected us, and it seems like we would be fairly careless to be, or it would be an unwise decision to do nothing, because it's entirely possible there will be no district, that is, no merged district, come July 1 because of the court activities. And, uh, that would be, that would leave the district with no budget at all. So, uh, at least in my mind, it makes a whole lot of sense to proceed and, and Edie was saying, well, you know, or was it Chris? I can't remember. Well, if, if the, the lawsuit doesn't go ahead and the court say, you know, that Act 46 is what it is and that we should proceed with that, then at this point, we would have done the work for deciding, you know, what the supplies are for the, the library here for Westminster and Athens and Grafton would have done the same thing and we could, we could add those budgets together and make one budget. So, it's, seems like a wise thing to go ahead with this.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, also just to say on the record here that, I don't know if people heard Tim Ash on, from my edition yesterday, the senator, the lead senator, whatever he said, Pro Tem, and he was saying how, "Well, the mergers have worked everywhere, you know, in the, in the districts that have merged and how wonderful it's been for providing more choices and everyone's, the voters are very happy. School Board members are more the ones opposing this than, than voters and parents of kids." And I just want to say, I don't doubt that in many districts, this has benefited districts. The reason why we and other districts are not supporting this is not because of, I think, any school board member enjoying particularly school board membership. It's that we, is that I believe, and I think our board believes that merging certainly with Athens and Grafton provides no benefits and in fact, as the Rockingham letter states well, takes more time and energy away from kids and does, and has no savings. And our alternative governance structure proposal actually did exactly what Act 46 was encouraging, was to encourage us to work better within the SU structure we had, and we were on that pathway. And I don't think there's any love of school board director-ing that's driving it, so I want that publicly stated. When he said it was school board members were sort of like seemingly protecting their turf, it was like, we're, I think, completely in support of better options for our students and more efficient use of taxpayer money and better educational opportunities. I don't see that happening at all with the Athens, Grafton use, as Rockingham states well. It's an incongruous, literally incongruent merger. As much as I like Athens or Grafton board members, it's, we're just not, doesn't benefit either town or our students or our administration. And so, I just wanted to make clear, like, I'm, it's not, it's not merging per se, it's that it's, you know, we had a good conception of how to merge to work well together, which is in our alternative governance structure.
Thank you, Rick. Any other thoughts? Okay, then, let's move on to discussion of the hopefully final FY '20 budget for Westminster School District. Edie, do you have, do you have a sense?
Yeah. Um, the change, of course, was the $58,000, which was my error for grabbing the 100% of the health premiums instead of taking out the employee share. But, I reran the numbers based on what Ricky Adams had done. He was able to give me student counts and when the kids came in, um, and into the school. So, I was able to run the ADM. And, uh, it's an actual increase in equalized pupils of 16.27, which is, I think, much better than the 250.93. Now, the only thing I don't have is all of the weighting. Um, and so, it may go a slight bit more than that.
There's two different topics there. Okay, do you want one?
Do you have one?
No.
Oh, okay. He's got that one. And there should be a revenue there.
I can pass it down over to you.
Perfect. Whoops, whoops, whoops.
Here it, Doug.
I got one.
Oh, you do?
Yep.
Okay.
Is this the two cents?
So, I feel a lot better about the tax calculation than I did last time. Um, I picked up the weighting that came through from the students that did end up in our ADM. It may be a tiny bit higher. It was like 9.58 for the weighting. It's not gonna be more, much more than that. So, um, I, I think this is probably close to what the state would have calculated. I was a little nervous doing it because it's always been done and just given to us, but this year, it was, wasn't. So, we need to move forward on this, so. But I think it looks a lot better. The budget looks good, the cuts Doug made, the one I fixed, um, and so, your tax rate's down about a penny. It's not a lot, but at least it's down, not up.
So, okay. Any questions for Edie?
I'd just like to add, with all the issues and, I guess, complications that we've had throughout this process, that I can't thank Edie enough and Ricky for all the hard work and time that they've spent on not just this budget, but all the budgets, because we all know, just from the conversations we've had and what we've seen, how difficult it's been with, with the forced mergers on top of that. So, I want to publicly thank Edie and Ricky for the hard work that they've done.
Thank you. Many late hours and long days.
Weekend, weekends.
And weekends, yeah.
But it's good, I'm on the backside of it now.
Um, okay, now, I, let's see, I'm looking at, I just want to make sure that, looking at the right thing. The, the number of students that you have now under this, the column for this budget is 167.2, or 267.2.
Yes.
And, um, last, last week, it was, that was at 250 because you...
From the state.
Right, right. And, and, but you knew that that was inaccurate.
Yeah, 'cause you had a class, I think it's your sixth grade, had 34 students in it, but it was showing up on the state report as nine. And so, you would have had like, all like very part-time kids to get from 34 down to nine. What we found was that when the kids were originally entered in Power School, they were entered under the wrong, um, school ID number. And so, I, I've always, the last, I haven't the last couple of years, but before that, I've explained to people what the reason that these numbers are so important. But I was lax in telling them what their school code was. I just kind of assumed that they knew it. And we actually found six different towns that were receiving our kids that we weren't getting credit for.
We found in conversations with Ricky at the AOE, is that right?
No, when Ricky was pulling the information off of Power School, we had many kids going to J, to Hyde Park, Lester, then we had Wes, Weathersfield, Springfield, Chester, and Ludlow. And so, I feel bad because when you're working with this all the time, you make assumption that everybody kind of has the same background, information... that everybody kind of has the same background information. And they obviously didn't, like, it's Supervisor Union 47. In some cases, people had put 2, T for town and then 047. But the Supervisor Union code and the town codes are very different. Now, in the elementary school, there should never be another town code because we don't have choice and we don't have any town's tuitioning. So it has to be Rockingham and Athens-Grafton and Westminster. At the high school and middle school, there are kids that are going in there. So you might have a child from Weathersfield or Springfield or Chester. Or in the middle school, they have Athens-Grafton, West, and Rockingham. So, but I think when people were entering them, and a lot of the kids have been in there for years, that they just filled in a code because they really didn't understand the importance of it. But I will tell you, I sent out an email this morning. I heard back from everybody. They jumped through hoops to get it done. They're having a problem at the AOE. I guess somebody uploaded their data and crashed their system. So tomorrow, Ricky is going to get it uploaded. They have not frozen the data yet, so we'll get credit for it. They're holding off because everyone's having issues. And so once that data goes up with the correct town codes, we should be fine. We should be golden. All the kids will be counted, they'll be weighted. So we'll, we'll get all of the equalized pupils that are due to us. So, but everyone has the codes now and I'll remember if someone new comes in, just to make sure they understand that, what the town codes are and how important it is when new students come in to the school, that we get the right coding. See, in the past, when they did the census, they grabbed the data manually out of Power School. This time, it's all automated. That's what made the difference.
I think, I suspect we're lucky that you're, you're the, you caught all this.
Well, Ricky and I were sitting there and we're going through all this. And then, you know, we keep going back and forth on the phone and we're looking everywhere but there. And then he's like, why do we have a TO 47? And I'm like, mm, in an elementary? I said, we don't. And I, I just think it's, I think the schools may work with the public school numbers more than we do in my office, but those aren't the numbers they use. They use the town-school-district codes, which unfortunately are different than the public school numbers. So just because you know one doesn't mean you know the other. So, but everybody was awesome. They got right on it. They dropped everything. They got it all cleaned up. So I think we're in really good shape and it was just, it was kind of a learning experience for all of us.
It also is, I know where there is that issue with the, the health insurance that you corrected. But, but disregarding that, it is a lesson in how, a relatively small change in the student count numbers. Last week, we were thinking of 250 or 251, and right now, we're looking at 267.
Yep.
Makes an enormous difference in how much, what the taxation rate is.
Yep. You were at about $1.32. And you're now down to $1.23. So that is, that's a big difference.
Now, that figure, the 267 students.
Yes.
That's your calculation of what you think it's going to be, what, when it comes down from the AOE.
Right. I've got 18, which is fine. So I used their 18. I added in Ricky's 19 numbers. I took out for the days the kids weren't enrolled. And then you just divide it in two. And then the preschoolers get multiplied by 46%. The high schoolers are seventh and eighth grade through high school, get multiplied by 1.13 because they get the extra 13% weighting. And then you multiply, once you get all that totaled, you multiply by .9570, which is a factor in the formula. So this is what I, I came up with a little less than that. I went back into the state's file, grabbed the weighting for English language learners and for poverty students. I grabbed those numbers. It was like 9.58, I think. Actually, that goes on before you multiply by the .959457. So I think I'm really, really close.
And this figure is, I doubt, it's a, it's a two-year average.
Yes. It's a two-year weighted average. So.
Other questions?
So Edie, the numbers that got inputted, the, they put in the wrong codes. That happens at the school level?
Yes.
So someone here puts those numbers in every year and that's what?
Yeah. And, and it's easy enough to do because if you don't know what the town-school-district number is, you just assume it's just a field you can put anything in, you know? And it's never been a problem. But with the statewide data system, the way it was done this year, it was all automated. It uploaded into, so our students that were miscoded just went to other districts.
So this is one of these things that I learned from this experience. But essentially, the supervision of that process falls to the principal, but really, the central office is the one who knows the right way to do this. I mean, each building principal's not going to know this.
No. No. And I have no access to Power School.
Yeah. But, yeah. So this is where, you know, the degree to which the Supervisor Union works well together can help, you know, because not really Supervisor Union employee doing it, but then it ends up being a...
No. There was no way for them to know this number. I think most everything that comes through to the schools is under the public school number. And the public school numbers are nothing like what that. I think, what's Westminster's PSO 91? And your town school code is T 234? I mean, they, they're not the same.
But it's, it hasn't made a difference.
It's right there.
It's right there.
You know, all this, when this information was all put into Power School, I don't know how many years back that went in Northeast, they did Power School. It was something that, it really wasn't going to be used by anyone else. So if it was a, if the alphanumeric number that was in there wasn't making much of a difference. So if we weren't going to the state system, we never really would have found this because no one was pulling for it. And we found it because the state started to pull from Power School and that's what kind of brought this to our attention. Or we didn't know until, you know, Ricky and Edie came across it. It was the alphanumeric numbers that were assigned way back when, were just off for whatever reason. And so there was no reason for anyone to expect they were wrong because no one was using them.
All right.
Just a couple of comments, thinking about the public again. These equalized pupil numbers are lower than the number of students our principal sees in the school on a regular basis.
Correct.
That's one point. Also, the trend, and from 2017 to now 2020, has been to increase the number of equalized pupils. So I think that's important for folks to know.
From 246 to 267.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. And then also looking at the homestead rate, you know, it stayed pretty close. And as was pointed out earlier, it'll go down just a smidge if these numbers all stay this year. Just a very small amount, but it will go down.
Right.
Thank you.
I should point out too, this is, this discussion about excess seventh and eighth graders a couple of years ago, that those excess kids actually count to the increased equalized pupil numbers. So it sort of offsets in some way the expenditure there. It comes back in terms of how we calculate this.
And this budget, I also want to point out, this budget includes the deficit from last year, right?
Uh, yes.
The 115,000.
Yeah. FY '18.
FY '18.
Correct.
With a, with a 3% increase in the overall budget. Is leading.
Yep.
Any further questions? Is there a motion to approve the budget?
I need the motion to approve the budget presented. So we're talking 4,890,882.39.
Thank you. Elise, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Okay. Then town warning articles, which, I printed up a copy of them. Here we are. Do you have other copies?
Yep.
Definitely Josh should have a copy.
What do you need? You need this?
Well, Josh, do you have a copy of these?
I don't.
Want me to?
Yeah. Put these in the minutes?
They'll have to go in the minutes, yeah. So there are, this is, this has been prepared by the, your office, right?
Yes, I have.
Yep. Chris? And I have the, the town meeting warnings from last year and the year before, if anyone's interested. But maybe I'll just read it because we don't have a full copy of them.
Sure.
It begins, "The legal voters of the Westminster Town School District are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Bellas Falls Union High School Auditorium in Westminster, Vermont on Saturday, March 2 at 10 o'clock to take action on the following articles. Article 1, to hear the reports of the town-school-district officers for the last year and to take action thereon. Article 2, shall the Westminster Town School District authorize and instruct its school directors and treasurer to borrow money if necessary on the credit of the town-school district for its current expenses in anticipation of the collection of taxes and receipt of money due from state aid. Article 3, shall the Westminster Town School District vote to pay its district officers compensation in the amounts of board chair 1,100, board members 800, clerk 125, and treasurer 1,000 dollars. Article 4, shall the voters of the Westminster Town School District approve the school board to expend $4,890,882.39, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year?" Question mark. "It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of $17,887.81 per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is 5.7% higher than spending for the current year. Article 5, to transact other proper business to be brought before the town-school-district meeting Westminster's town..." And then it's got our names at the bottom. Any questions about that?
On Article 3, should it be clarified that the clerk is 125 per meeting?
Per meeting.
Do you want that?
Yeah. Yeah.
I have to give this to you. It's okay.
See how it's...
Annual compensation for board, board chair, board members, and treasurer, and then clerk 125 per...
That's probably, yeah.
Meeting.
So probably it would make sense to put board chair, $1,100 annually, board members, $800 annually, clerk, $125 per meeting, and treasurer, $1,000 annually. I think. I'm just going to look...
Treasurer is 1,000 annually is about?
Yes.
Right. Paul Harlow now. Paul Harlow now, right?
It, it, just, in last year, it was worded, "To see if the Westminster Town School District will vote to pay its district officers compensation in the following amounts. Town school board, district board chair, $1,100 per year. Other town school board members, $800 per year. And the town school district clerk, $125 per district meeting."
I'll change that to year. To be consistent, that's good.
Yeah. Okay. Any other?
Per monthly meeting or per meeting or?
Sorry?
Clerk.
Oh, the per district meeting.
Per district meeting?
Yeah. Any other questions? The, the, Edie, that, I haven't looked at it, at it, but that 5.7% higher than the per equalized pupil spending, 5.7% higher than spending for the current year, that's, that's the correct figure? Any other questions? Okay. Then all those in favor of approving the town meeting articles as we have discussed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great.
So I made that motion.
I, I made the motion. Town report documents. That is on the agenda, I think, alerting you, Doug, and me, that we at this point have no excuse to dilly-dally any further. And we need to write our, correct?
Yeah. We just need, with the timeline, we're trying to get everything out to the town clerks and be respectful of their timeline. They've already extended it for us, so I want to make sure that we get all the information to them so they can include that the school information in the town reports is here instead of having it being two separate booklets. So it's just, it's just a quick overview of a board report from the board chair and the principal so we can submit, be ready to go and get everything to the town clerks.
Great.
Clarification?
Yep.
Rather than two reports? I don't, it was always embedded in the big report.
Well, in the, in the past, it's my understanding is that the school generated their own, the SU generated their own reports and put it together and it wasn't included in the actual town reports.
So no?
I, I know that that was discussed. I, I don't know as a, I mean, I have these back of a bunch of years and I don't think it actually happened.
I think it was done in some districts. I don't think it was done in Westminster.
I guess, so I guess we're trying to do it first. Live and learn.
Because our, our chair's letter and our principal's letter is in the town book.
So it's no changes for you?
Correct.
No changes for us, but still a deadline.
Yep. Okay. But still a deadline would be your point.
All right. Any other business to come before the board? No? All right. Then director's comments. Great.
I guess I just want to say, the Compass School Community Service Winter Term occurs at the end of the month of February. And so if there's anybody out there or anyone here who's looking for projects, you know, it's a week-long dedication of consulting teams essentially, working on problems from the community. So if there's some back... teams essentially, working on problems from the community, so if there's some backburner kind of issues anybody knows about that a group of students could work on, please contact the school. You want a fishing project?
No, I was hammering, just a very weak hammer, like, I got an idea.
Yeah. That's what we love, to be helpful.
Elise?
Well, I just wanted to thank the town, the board of Rockingham for presenting that letter of support. We appreciate that. That's it. And I'm very happy we got our budget voted in.
Yeah, it's been great. Great surprise. Tip.
Thank you, Edie.
Thank you, Edie.
Yeah, that's all I got.
No, thanks, and more thanks to Edie. I did other thanks to Rockingham, and actually, to the board and the community. This has been an interesting year, and I appreciate that the board is continuing to do what we were elected to do at a time when there is a lot of uncertainty in the state. We're proceeding to do the best we can.
I wanted to note that, along with the budget and these articles we just approved, that at the town meeting time, there's an election for new school board members, and there are two open seats right now. So far as I know, there is only one petition that's, that's being filled out, or one candidate that's doing a petition. So, if there is anyone interested in running for the school director position, school board director, please get a petition from the town hall. You need 25 signatures by January 28.
28?
28.
Monday.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.